I go home after, because I'm like, and then I go home and I'm like.
We're running a couple minutes late, and I apologize for that, but we have a public hearing scheduled. This is the City Council for the City of Woodland Hills. This is Tuesday, January 11th. It's about 6:05. We are holding a public hearing tonight to hear comment from the public about amending our city code 6-1-5 regarding snow removal from streets, adding in the requirements to clear sidewalks. So if we have members of the public that would like to comment on this amendment to a city code, we would give you two minutes, and I will run my timer and try and give you a 30-second warning if you get to your two minutes, if you're getting to your two minutes. So you'll have something. And we will just traditionally just kind of start to work our way back of any comments. So is there anyone on the first row that would like to comment off the side? Now you might. All right, second row, anybody that has public comment? All right. Third row? Are you sure, Jamie? Just checking. I see a height back there, Madeline. You're not fooling it. Okay, anyone in the back row, I think. Okay, we have, Jody, have anybody that's attending our meeting through Zoom that has their hand raised? Okay, Sherry.
Hey, good evening. Happy New Year, everybody. I guess my, my comment around sidewalks, I haven't seen what's been proposed.
Are you, would you like to comment still? We can't hear you if you're talking, so sorry.
Sherry, I can hear you. Sherry, this is Chris. I can hear you. Let me get with Jody. She doesn't have her down.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we can hear you. This is great.
Happy New Year. My comment, I guess, goes around the creation of an ordinance in general for the safety and the welfare and the protection from liability for the city. And when I think about creating a new ordinance, I think, how are we going to enforce? So I guess my comment is in conjunction with a question. What is the definition of a sidewalk? Is that sidewalk within an HOA, as in the case of Four Seasons? Perhaps Summit Creek in what they may be proposing to development, to develop? Maybe if Whoopa got resurrected? So perhaps this may be better represented in the language of a development agreement? Because some HOAs take care of snow removal on sidewalks if it's two inches or more. And the other part of my comment has to do with the the grant that we've put in for, for the quote "trail" that's going to run down Woodland Hills Drive that will also help drastically with drainage. So does the word sidewalk include trail? And who would be responsible? It's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm not correct, that that trail would be paved down Woodland Hills Drive. Who would be responsible to remove the snow
30 seconds.
from that quote "trail"? Some property owners along Woodland Hills Drive don't even reside in Woodland Hills. So how do you, how do we propose to enforce this ordinance through the HOA or through individual property owners? And what defines the definition of sidewalk? That's my comment.
Thanks, Sherry. When we get to the work session and we consider this, we'll get some input from Wayne about your, the planning commission's thoughts on that. All right, it looks like we've got Chad, Pam.
Lyman.
Lyman, thank you. Chad Lyman, that's good.
Yes, thank, thank you for the time. This kind of dovetails in with Sherry Berger's comment in that, you know, I know the trail down Woodland Hills Drive, you know, I would guess at that, at this time, it's not considered a sidewalk. And at what point would it be considered a sidewalk? And then the other concern is that with the additional salt and stuff that's put into the trucks, it's, it would be virtually impossible in a lot of cases to even budge that snow or have the, the appropriate equipment to even move that snow. Just, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. I don't see anyone else with their hand raised. We've had a whole of people join up live meetings. Is anybody here that wants to comment? Section on adding sidewalks to the All right, here we go for the moment. This is public hearing. And we'll move on to our second which is in the office of office. We've got a new mayor. And well, two new council members. To be sworn in tonight, and Jody. Everyone here is excited. We'll start with Mayor Winder and
Mr. Your live office is and Jody, you gotta mute yourself back there.
Can you hear us now? Can you hear us?
Hey, Chris, okay.
Yes, Severin says we can, he can hear us.
Does that work?
Yes, and see you.
And Sherry. Okay, thanks, Sherry.
Seeing's not that exciting.
Doral. You're up. Yep, it's early time. I'm inviting you, Doral.
This is Ben. So we're going to break. Well, aren't we gonna do Doral? We do have to do Doral. Oh, my gosh. So used to be.
Mine to be curious. And he's even here on this one, so.
You're gonna keep swearing at us?
Yeah. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
All right. It's working.
I've had the opportunity to work with Mayor Price since 2001. She first served on our planning commission. As the planning commission secretary, she then served as a city council member. And then she took on this mountain of responsibility to be our mayor. She helped us through a very difficult time in all of our lives. And guided us and led us back to our homes. And we all appreciate that.
And then I ordered you to stay.
Some of us, unfortunately, she's like, oh, again, but you know what, we have grown a ton under her land, and she will be greatly missed, but I know she's not going away and that she'll stay involved. And so from all of us to you, we want to thank you. And this is a flag that actually we've saved for a number of years. This was one of the flags that flew over the city when we were evacuated. So this, we're gonna get to her. We can thank you.
Woo-hoo!
Give these to your wife and thank her for, here's to you house service. And again, this is a flag for you, the City Councilmember from MacArthur. Along with Councilmember Pratt, spent hours over at the high school when we were evacuated. Did we give the same thing to Bob? And we will give the same thing to Councilmember Ottley when he's back in the city. I think he's enjoying some wonderful warm weather, and we appreciate his service as well.
Jenny? Well, congratulations to Mayor Winder and to Councilmembers Hilliard and sorry, Janet Lunt, thank you. And we are going to take a 15-minute recess. It's about 20 after so. 6:35, 6:40, we'll reconvene for the public works, or for the city council work session. And Mayor Winder, it'll be your baby.
Can I please get a picture of all of the, the current council and then a picture with the new council for the newsletter? So everybody come up here on our page.
Everybody else can adjourn to the other room and.
6:45?
Okay, so, and, and I would ask your patience as I conduct this first meeting. And I'm going to give them some pointers and guidance. So we, I believe, will begin with the work session. And with respect to some of the items of business. So we need a resolution appointing a city recorder. And it's my intention to issue continually to willingly serve to ask Jody Stones to serve in that capacity.
And make a motion then that we
We're not in emotion time.
Oh, yeah. I forget. I'm really, really jumped. I wanna jump ahead.
I was getting ready to second that.
Hey, sorry, Jody.
Work session time.
We're good with that.
Okay, and then Deputy City Recorder Marcy remaining, if she's willing. City Treasurer Lori. Finance Director Chris Hildy. And one of the other resolutions is appointing a mayor pro tempore. And I've spoken with Ben Hilliard about that. My request would be to advance serving that capacity.
I like that idea personally.
No, that's great.
With respect to appointing a member of the Appeal Authority. So David Stones, we're thankful, hope you're still on, David. We're thankful for the service that you've given over the years. David has resigned from the board, and we also have a legacy from my position. And, but I, I do want to, it's, it's something that we won't be able to address tonight, but I have spoken with actually the attorney about the possibility of disbanding the Board of Adjustment in favor of hiring an attorney as an appeal authority. Run into a number of issues, my experience on the Board of Adjustment, especially lately, is there are extremely complicated issues that are coming before it, and there are procedural issues that we are just not equipped to tackle in our current arrangement. And talking to Craig Smith and David Church alluded to a similar thing. It is a trend among developing cities to basically farm this service out. And that way, you don't have a resident that, you know, is having to make decisions like that concerning neighbors. And then you also have expertise. You know, when I was on the Board of Adjustment, I felt that we really needed independent legal counsel if we were gonna serve as a board. And so, you know, I, I'm sensitive to the expense of hiring somebody to do this, but I think that if we're gonna have a Board of Appeal residency, then we would need to engage an attorney that is not the city attorney to advise them in their capacity, because the city's interests are not necessarily aligned with the board's interests. So that's something that I, I want to at least add as an agenda item.
So could that be accomplished with one attorney?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right.
And, and we have a resident, Vaughn McKell, who actually does that. He, I talked to him about whether he would like to do it for our city. It would probably be better not having a resident do it anyway, but he was, he was too busy. He felt he was too busy to do that. But, but it is, it's something that, that there are a number of attorneys that would be able to serve.
Good.
Any other discussion?
So in the meantime.
Yeah, in the meantime.
We only have two people who are currently serving and an alternate, which does make a quorum if the alternate is there. And I think we voted a few weeks ago that the alternate has a vote.
We have three. We still have Travis.
That was actually the planning commission.
Yeah, that, for like tomorrow night's Board of Appeals, Travis has recused himself. Dave is no longer on there, so we only have two members for tomorrow night's meeting. And then we have an alternate, which I was going to ask, did we include that we did it for the planning commission, but did we let the alternate have a vote? At all? So I don't know if they can hold their meeting tomorrow.
Well, but that's the whole point of the alternate is if, if you don't have enough people, you can still vote. I think the planning commission, the point was they would vote even if there was the full planning commission there. And then it would, the vote would only be used in certain circumstances. Isn't that right, Wayne?
Not, not completely. The way that Ed Horstman said was that he could only vote if their, if his votes needed to be for a quorum.
Right.
But we changed it to allow that vote to count. He's one of the five people who are on the planning commission. So if we have one planning commission member who steps away and can't come that night, the alternate can vote, not being one of the three quorum. He can vote as one of five, a normal stand-in.
Well, tomorrow night, they would be able to have it because he'll be standing in to fulfill the, the quorum, I suppose, if all three can come. I don't even know if all three of them can come. Have they said anything to you?
Yeah, sure.
I just received a notice earlier to leave from Travis Poulpherman that he sent an email out, counseling the right committee.
Okay.
He said that the members of the Appeal Authority have decided to as you may be aware, two members of the five-member board have resigned.
Jody, do you need a mic? Do you need a mic for the, I don't know.
However, the fugites have asked myself, Travis Poulpherman, to recuse myself from the hearing. The remaining three members of the board have expressed concern about only having three members at the hearing as it takes three votes from the Appeal Authority to overturn any decision. In this case, it would require a unanimous vote to find in favor with the fugites. And he asked that the city recorder post cancellation of the January 12th meeting and reschedule within a week with, during the week of February 11th, 2022.
And, and what is this appeal regarding?
This appeal has been filed by the fugites, and it's regarding the issuance of the Adams Extension of Temporary Occupancy.
Okay, and then the other question that I have is why does a, a person who's making an appeal, do they have the right to ask someone to recuse themselves?
Yeah, mine too.
How do they, why do they get to, why do they get to request that?
Well, I think they can request that. Whether or not the board member chooses to oblige is up to the board member.
But I think it's all rooted in the perception of conflict interest. And I, I would agree that I don't personally believe that that standard is met, but as Joey mentioned, it's, it's something that if a board member feels like they would in some regard paint an outcome,
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess I just was asking the question, I guess, what needs to be clearly understood is that by asking him to recuse himself, essentially, they're rendering the board unable to make a decision. So Paul, or Travis's approach is really the only one, which is postpone it till the next time.
And/or until a board can be comprised, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I get it. It's just, it's kind of one of those weird things where by making that request, they've kind of shot themselves from being able to make that appeal.
Well, and I do believe, I mean, if, if we can, because what the, because according to the ordinance, we do have to have a five-member board, so we would have to amend our ordinance to allow for the appointment of this single appeal authority. So that would be what I would like to bring before the council next, next meeting. But assuming that we can find agreement on, on that point, then I think that we can move forward relatively quickly and find someone that can fill that role. And so there, there probably will be overlap. You know, as we, I would appeal and the new composition of the board. But, you know, I, I, I would like to, I would hope that, you know, the fugites or, or any appellant would feel that they're getting an impartial hearing through this third party.
Totally agree. I think, I think impartiality, and, and that's probably what has led to some of the emotion behind this, is the feeling that it's not impartial because it's their neighbors. Even the, you know, and that's just an argument that some people would make.
And I think that's an interest of justice for all concerned.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Okay, any other discussion on that? All right, so the next item is opposed ordinance adopting city code 10171. Dave, I'm told that this is yours.
10171? Oh, no, no, this is not mine.
I was going to suggest on this, we, we have been asked to have our legislators, Senator Mike McKell and Representative Jeff Burton, come and speak to us in our next council meeting. And I have, Doral had asked for the senator to come and discuss the ADU issue. And so if the council wants to discuss it tonight, fine, but otherwise, I would motion, when it comes time, that we table it for next time after we hear from our legislators.
And I would like that so that we have on record for our citizens to review why this is coming up again. When we debated this a couple of years ago, it was hotly talked about in, in the public opinion, and so we got a lot of feedback from the public. And I'd like to be able to refer them back to a recording of this meeting when that person is here, trying to explain to us what the state intention is of, of telling us to, to do this. Thank you, Carrie, and I, I would, I would second that at the time, but.
You know, the only, just to counter-argue, Doral.
Okay.
I don't know that it's gonna make one iota difference, if I'm being blunt.
Oh, oh, might not, but.
Because the state is definitely, and has been, they've headed down a certain direction for a number of years. And, and now we're kind of out of, I'm not gonna say out of compliance, but we're a little bit behind where the state is going. And whether we like it or not, that's the reality. So we can ask the questions. We can hold off again.
Well, I need it because I need to justify my vote on this issue when it finally comes up, because I'm still on the fence about it. And so
I think what.
I want the citizens to know why we each are voting the way you are voting. I'm not sure the state would do anything to us if we didn't do anything, you know, that's my opinion. I'm not sure what the punishment is or what their, what their actions would be that would be. But how?
There's some, I think there's some BNC road funds that would be not given to our city.
It's not in their ordinance. It's not in their ordinance. It's not in what they voted on. No penalties are listed in there. Did you notice?
Well, they.
It says, this is, this is what we want to do as a state.
I thought that I heard some penalties.
Oh, I, I didn't.
It might be tied to some other, you know, because one piece of legislation can be tied, piggybacked with another and another like that.
Because it's going to be complicated with our homeowners association next door, because they aren't going to change their, their ideas.
That's different, Doral, and you need to realize that. The homeowners association are allowed to do things from a rules standpoint that cities are not.
Including not allowing rentals.
Right. So, so that's not a good argument for us. What I, what I was going to say to you, and I'm, I'm being sincere.
Uh huh.
What I think would be the most productive use of your particular time, in addition to asking the senators whatever questions you want to ask, would be to look at the ordinance and say, what are the parts that are super objectionable? And what are the parts can I live with? And try and craft that in a way that we, as a city, can live with it. I think that is the best path forward.
Yes. And that we can still be in compliance with state statute. We don't, we're a political subdivision, and that we exist because of the state. And so, that is why we are, we are under the jurisdiction in terms of state statute for, for all laws. And, and then we can then craft our own ordinances to be stricter than those, but not more lenient than those.
This version of it is a lot kinder and friendlier than it was a couple of weeks ago, that the, the water share's taken out.
Oh, we're not, that's ours, that's, that's that.
Yeah. But she's right. It, it is, it is easier to swallow.
I, I did bring that up, just so you know, on the water shares issue. Wayne had asked me to contact the state attorneys and others to see if any other city did that. They said, actually, it probably wouldn't, even if we wanted to put that in, it probably wouldn't be in compliance, because it's against the law to ask for those types of infrastructure impact, there would be an impact and unnecessary, or, how'd they put it? Impact fee. It would be an impact fee that we don't have the jurisdiction to put into place for, for the water shares, because when the homes are built, because this is only internal ADUs, not external. So, if it's an external, we might be able to require additional water shares. But internal, the homes were built for the way they are with the water shares that came with that home, whether there's a family with 10 kids living there, or a, or a couple that built that house, that, that the water shares came with that property. And so, it would be basically illegal for us to then require an additional impact fee, because there is no impact additional to what that home was originally allocated.
So, and on ours, the requirements, when I read through it, I mean, they're all standard construction things, anyway. They're all standard what a home should be. There's nothing special that we're asking them to do, except for the door, right? There's a, it requires a door. Anyway, this is a lot kinder and friendlier than the version we had a few weeks ago.
And we've ensured that it's compliant with the underlying state statute authority.
That's what we ask the planning commission to do.
Well, well, if it is, and I'm, and I think it is, from what I've read too, why do we need that document when we can simply remove the phrase that I couldn't find? It's in our current ordinance, but it's, it's, there's a no rental phrase in our current, current ordinance. We just remove that and go on with life, rather than put this one together that's basically repeating what the state already says.
Let me see if I understand what you're saying.
I, I don't want a city ordinance that is just on top of and, and doesn't need to be over a state ordinance.
And that's, that's fair, but what I, what I'm curious about is, you're saying, why don't we just remove the phrase about no rental?
Right.
And we'll have VRBs, Airbnbs.
Well, that's covered somewhere else in there.
No, it's not.
I could not find the no rental that you and I found last.
I'll find it for you.
Thank you. I couldn't find it.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty easy.
But, but it's one sentence.
Yeah, it's not much, and it does cover, it, it differentiates between a, a short-term rental, less than 90 days, and a long-term rental. And that's the differentiation that we, that we use. The, what we felt, what I felt back, I don't know, three years ago, whenever we had this before, was my concern was really around parking.
That's a problem.
You have to have it onsite on a hard surface.
Like, you have to have it onsite on a hard surface, and you can't, you can't just have an ADU without adding additional parking, or having the right number of parking, I think that's the right way of saying it. So, that was really what the concern was for me, was around parking. That's an example of something that would not be covered in the state statute, but we can require.
It is. Parking's in there.
Yeah, we, we brought that up on, when we were asked to give our input, and that's the one, based on our.
Parking's in, in the state.
Yeah. Based on our discussion here, I brought that up to the state.
Everything that's in ours is in the state that I've, that I've found.
Yeah, I think for me, a lot of it is what's in this bill, or this, this proposal that we're bringing forth, is really, how do we make sure that the potential renter is taken care of? That they are safe and that they are protected, and that we, as the city, are also making sure that they are protected. That's kind of what I see from this bill, is less looking at it from the standpoint of, let's put more red tape in place, as much as it is, let's make sure it's safe and done correctly, versus having somebody put in a basement in an unsafe situation.
I, I used to have two challenges with it.
Please.
What, what are we going to do with the inspecting, you know, that we, the city needs to pay for and do and spend time with? We inspect, how do we handle inspections that fail?
Well, that's what Craig does.
Do we remove renters? Carrie, are you going to kick a renter out, you know?
Well, this is Craig. Craig does all the inspections now.
Alright. Yeah. Well, well, a suggestion I heard that was really wise was, I don't need to go inspect if I give them a form that has all of the rules on it, and they sign it and turn it into the city, then they've taken the responsibility of living with everything. If you're going to inspect, you got to inspect on a frequency, not just once.
Well, they would have to have.
Things change.
They would have to get a, a building, I mean, a business license, and so, I don't know, I guess that would be a consideration. Do we have to go in once a year and inspect just to make sure their business license is still up to date? Because it does come back, I think, liability to the city, just like right now, if we, if we approve a plat, and then that, that, because based on whatever, and then that ends up being unbilled with the law, that's a problem, because we've approved it. So, if we approve.
I want to, I want to put the, 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 living the law on the head of the household, not on Craig or the city. In other words, I believe if they signed, if they signed a document, they said, we are in line with every one of these things, sign, they sign their name, that's all I need.
But they don't necessarily know if they're, if that's not the profession. I mean, I, as a homeowner, wouldn't know that there was a safety consideration. I mean, really.
They, they, they know. It's plain. It's plain. He's got a list of things that he's looking for.
And what's our responsibility? Health, safety, and welfare of this community. And if we're taking away safety, because we don't want someone walking into somebody else's house, then we, that's, that's our fault.
You're not. You don't inspect me when I have a new baby in the house. You don't inspect when additional members come into my family. So, you don't need to, you know, maybe you don't need to inspect when they rent it to someone.
But we're not, we're, 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 you are crossing a different line, just a moment, David. We're crossing a different line here, because what we're doing is, we're giving residents the opportunity to have a business. In doing so, they are signing to have the inspection, so that they are safe to rent that space.
And if they fail, you will not stop their rental. You won't do it unless you put some liens or other things in that ordinance that you want to pass that has punishments. You know, I don't know how you're going to enforce it. And if you don't enforce it, you don't need to have it.
Other cities put a, they'll put a, a notice, a lien on the property stating that they have a, you know, an out-of-compliance accessory apartment. And then they can't sell.
And, and what happens to the renters while they're, while they're out of compliance? You know, they're going to live there. They're going to live there, or they already do in our city. You know, you're opening up a can of worms here of something that we can't follow through on. You know, that's why I'm saying, they sign a form, they, they've said, everything's in line with our house, we're going to put a family in there, and we're responsible, because they are, anyway.
But, Doral, what if there's exposed wires and a fire started, and the renters are harmed?
You don't think you have that today? It's the same today.
But, but what if the renters sue the city, because we gave a license and we didn't inspect?
We go back to their document that they signed.
And I, I would like to jump in on that one. Like, I, and I talked to Craig about this a little bit, I think that, you know, we're damned if we do, damned if we don't, because if we insert ourselves into the middle of any safety concern, we are in effect giving a stamp of safety approval, which if there is a problem, after we've given that stamp of safety approval, then we're absolutely going to be.
You are, then you are on.
Right. So, I think that that is a fair point. And if you can shift, I'd be curious to know what other cities do. I mean, I, you know.
Exactly. That would help.
A young city, that, well, young in the sense of, developing these types of ordinances, I, I just, it'd be nice to know, you know, those who are already trained here, what exactly they're, how they deal with enforcement and, and liability, strike that balance.
And how often they have the inspections? I don't assume it's just once a year. I mean, I know people who live in apartment complexes, that they come in once a year and look through, and you sign it as part of your lease.
Just to answer your question, the current ordinance was mostly ripped off from Salem.
Okay.
And then, the one that I did four years ago was kind of a conglomeration of Morgan, Elk Ridge, and somebody up in Park City, in, in the Park City area, smaller town up there.
Have you discussed with them some of the shortcomings they have in their ordinance?
So, every one of these cities has this kind of an ordinance, and, for the safety reasons. And all of them involve inspections. They just do. So, yeah, they have an inspector that basically goes and inspects periodically, you know, similar to what you do with a fire inspection, right? You periodically go into a building and, and see whether or not it's meeting fire code. So, it's a very similar process, though, anyway. But my point that I was going to make is, I think the course forward, at least for tonight, is we table it and we wait for the senators. I, as I pointed out, I don't think it's going to make a bit of difference to the actual ordinance, because I think we, you know, we're, we're really, if, if we don't have anything, we're by default kind of letting anything happen. And I'm not comfortable with that, either.
That's where we are right now.
That's where we are right now. And as I pointed out four years ago, we have problems. But, anyway.
Any other comments from anybody on that phone?
Here.
You talked about permit, but I think this is a conditional, or a building permit, I think this is a condition.
Yes.
It's not. Not a condition.
It's a permitted use. The state, when they, when they passed this legislation, said this is a permitted use of a home, to have an accessory apartment. You don't have to go through the conditional use permit process, you get approval for an accessory apartment in a home.
You may be able to have that inspection done by sunrise.
At an, at an expense.
If, if they have a checklist of what they're looking for, if you're requiring a fire hydrant, or not a fire hydrant, or a fire extinguisher, it may be something that we could have sunrise do.
Smoke detectors. Yeah, carbon monoxide.
Coming into a third party instead of a city.
Yeah.
That city is a critical approach.
Yeah. Well, and that could also be part of, just like we do normal inspections, where the homeowner or the renter, as part of their business, incurs that cost, because that's the cost of business.
It would be the homeowner's responsibility to schedule the inspection, pay the fee, and, and just go third-party.
It, it, the more we talk about this, the worse it is in my mind. How, first of all, how are you going to know or determine that someone is renting something or going to rent something? I might have my son and his family move in and pay me rent. You think, you think I'm going to tell you?
Isn't it your responsibility to do it?
Well, they don't do it now. We really have renters now. And do you expect them to come forward and, and ask for an inspection? You're shaking your head no.
No more than if I have a guy up the hill that's got a pile of two floors.
Yeah.
Yeah. Using that same analogy, if we're having violations now.
Right.
Why do you think that somebody's going to sign a form, attesting to that they've done things, and they're going to be honest about it? So, that, that's the risk that comes into play here, where, where people are ignoring what they're supposed to do now. And this is not unlike an inspection of a home. A lot of these people are going to have to have modifications done to their home. They have to put a window in a bedroom that's going to be used. They have to have a certain fire safety requirement. So, those are the kinds of things that are going to get inspected. If somebody comes in and wants to remodel their home, they get a government permit, and it's, it's, inspections done of that. So, that, those are the kind of things that this law allows to do, and, and I think, again, I think the city would be neglectful, but if a, at least an initial inspection, you're not doing. I'm not saying yearly inspections, once you have a yearly inspect, once you do the first inspection, then you may very well be okay to let that carry forward. But, it needs to be an initial inspection of whatever's been done to that home, to lock by it, to allow accessory apartment to be part of that structure.
It's.
I think you'd have to do it annually.
I.
If we're going to check, do the gas work, if it's working, and if you don't do it annually, you've just signed off five years down the road that that smoke work could have been done.
More carbon monoxide.
So.
And we had it now, we've had residents mail a letter in and say, this home is breaking a room out. So, how are you going to approach that?
It's going to be ugly. It's going to be ugly.
Hey, do you have somebody living in your house?
You know, Carrie, when I went to B, when I was a student at BYU, I rented a room in a potato chip factory for $75 a month. That had never been inspected, I promise. That's in Orem. You know, there are cities that have rentals going on that are not inspected. It, I mean, there, there are just things that are going to happen in our city, no different than they are already, but I just don't want to throw an inspection on top of it, and a fee, and, and rules, and stuff that.
But it's a business. So, we're talking, we're not talking resident anymore, because we require inspections when you move into your home.
Is it a business if my son moves in with his family and pays me rent?
No. My son lives in my basement, but he doesn't pay anything.
Well.
We've all had that.
Well.
But when you start it to be a business.
Then that's the way I'm going to rent, I missed the way, I'm going to rent everything. It's just family.
If it's not, if it's only to family, that's different.
There's a long stretch of what family is, you know?
Not really.
Oh, yeah, it's in our ordinance. And it's me and all my kids and blah, 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 and it's detailed, plus one other of my choosing. I mean, it's crazy what's in our ordinance for the definition of a family. And it's, it's correct, it's good to go to, but it gives me a lot of leeway into telling you, I'm, I'm running to family.
But we also have to comply with the state statute, which does define family.
I think for me, is really, like I said earlier, it comes down to that safety factor. And I think that what would make me lose sleep at night is if you come to a meeting one day, Doral, or any of our firemen, and you went into a home, had a renter in the basement, and there was a child you couldn't save, because they were in a room that didn't have a, a window that, that they could have gotten out of. And that's the part that I think, that's what this is, for me, is all about, is if we have, even if it's just Craig, or a third party, going into a home and just making sure the big things are good, that windows are there, right? That they have the ability to escape. Because that's, like I said, that's my main, primary concern, is that huge safety factor.
I just don't know how you get in and do that inspection if you're not invited.
You are invited.
You are invited, because they applied for a business license.
You have existing rentals right now that are not going to invite you.
Every single one of the ordinances that we're going to create come down to this. Are they going to want to follow the law or not?
Mm-hmm. That's true.
If I do a remodel, I'm willing to let you know, or I'm not.
Yeah.
Right? And that's just the nature of things.
I build a shed, I'm going to let you know, or I'm not.
Right.[1795.12]
So.
Yeah.
All we can do is, is design.
I've done one of those.
For the integral. And those that want to not, will not. And all we can do is, how can we make it the safest, like Carrie said earlier, the safest, you know, the well-being, you know, and upholding our old to make it the best place we can?
Doral, I went through this, I highlighted, and it's super reasonable. Like, there's nothing, there's nothing crazy in it. It has a minimum height, has smoke detectors, a GFCI, window, handrails.
I, I love all those rules.
They're, they're all like standard safety.
I just don't want, I just don't want to inject the city into every home that wants to do this.
Is there really that many?
Well, I don't want to know, frankly. I don't know. And I don't want to know who's living in your house and who's living in the mayor's house. I don't need to know that. I need to know it's safe. When you built it, it was. Followed all the ordinances, followed all the rules. But you may go in there, move in on day one and rip out all the smoke detectors because you're stupid. Or the fire, or the, or the water sprinklers. You know, you can make, you can be stupid. But I don't want to govern stupidity and I certainly don't want to inspect it.
So to that point, being stupid for yourself is one thing. Being stupid for others is not okay.
That's why you got to sign my form.
I also, I want you to know. If I'm renting, because if you're coming to my house because it's on fire, I want you to know that is not the only one. Safe.
That would be helpful, true.
And so I think there's some, there's some safety things here that are very, very important.
And I think that when it comes to property rights, I mean, every law that sort of impinges on a property right has to strike the balance. I mean, is the city's interest, does it not necessarily outweigh, but is it sufficient that we can interject ourselves in the middle of a property decision? Because I totally agree with the philosophy there. I mean, I, I don't like the government coming in and telling me how to manage my property.
Right.
But I do think that there is a balance that can be struck. And, and that's why I was learning about the, sort of the, the approach that other cities have taken. Because, you know, as long as we're sort of following suit with what others have done, then at least we can have some assurance. I mean, that's not to say that other cities are necessarily well managed, but, but at least there's some precedent to take in terms of the approach that gives us, you know, we're just not pulling this out of the air and saying, well, we're going to tell you how to manage property. This is something that is sort of tested in a variety of jurisdictions.
I just don't feel like it's broken today. I don't think it's broken at all.
So the state has asked this, the state has said, this is what you're doing, right? Because we have to follow state statute. We can change it enough. Like I said, we can make it a little more stringent, but we can't make it more lenient. And we put in those really basic things in there. When I asked the question, I think it was a week or two ago, how many of the cities who have passed this in, in years ago, right? They passed it right away. One, because they wanted to show they had affordable housing options. We haven't had it for that particular reason, what other people do. But I asked, what is the percentage? It's less than 10%. More closely to 4% or 5% of homes that actually end up doing this because it is a lot of work to convert your home, to get all this stuff. But it shows that you're in compliance with not necessarily that we're going to have every home in the city saying, ah, we want this. There might be, if we only have 4%, 4% or 5%, we're talking, what, maybe 10 to 15 homes that might want to do it? So we're not even talking that this is a big, huge mandate, but we're allowing people who do want to do it to do it safely.
Well.
Y'all know, y'all know how I'm going to vote.
I'm not sure exactly, like you suggested, Dave, maybe we would just table this for now and then revisit it.
Well, we're talking about next time. Just, I don't know if you heard that, when I was saying that when I invited the, our senator and representative to come to address this specifically.
Okay.
As well as a legislative update, but so that Doral then could have the ability to ask them all the questions that he wants to, to them. So it's on the public record so that then when we vote, there's a, there's a background that shows why.
I will be prepared.
Okay, so in effect, then what we're going to do is we're going to bump this, the decision on the ordinance itself, we'll bump it until the next council meeting and after we've had an opportunity to get feedback from the state legislators. And so for today.
And I will send them a copy of ours so they can review what we're proposing as well as then they can review that next to what the state has, has asked us to do, what the state statute is, so they can be prepared to answer the question.
Find a no rental in our ordinance, Dave. I, I looked at the codified ordinances and it was gone. Maybe you can find it, that we say no rentals in a, in a sentence.
Well, we don't.
We don't.
I read that somewhere.
We do say no short-term rentals. But what we do say is all of our zoning is single-family housing. That's, and that, again, this is four years ago. This is the discussion we had four years ago.
Yep.
And it never says no rentals. It does say single-family housing.
So we have to change that too?
No.
What you do if you have two families in a home?
That would follow under.
This is carving out an exception.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
The ADU would be the exception to that.
So, again, status quo today is no.
Short-term.
No multiple families within a single home.
That's what I heard in there somewhere.
Unless you're family, that doesn't count.
Corbett, your zoning isn't number of family, it's number of units.
Yeah.
So it's R119, one unit per $19,000.
Hmm.
It's not one family. You know, everything.
It does say, it does say single-family, though, in the zoning, Corbett, in the, in the code.
So you can rent long-term if you're not there. You can rent to another family long-term your whole house. But you can't rent short-term to anybody.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, I, I actually skipped number nine. So my apologies for that. It was the resolution 2022-07, meaning the city's schedule for a quick preparation piece and sewer impact fee. I was going off of an older agenda when I made my notes, so I actually don't know who was overseeing this particular.
So these kinds of things are just pass-through charges. So Payson charges us, us so much and we just have to increase our fee schedule to match what Payson is charging us. It's that simple.
For the residents who use the service.
Right.
This is actually an income fee that charge that someone gets from building that will be hooked to.
Okay.
So this is going to increase it to $2,005.
But it, doesn't that money just go to Payson? So.
It's not a pass-through. Payson, Payson, we send, we collect the money and then based on the money that's collected, we send. They don't, they don't bill us.
Right.
Yeah, it passes through us.
So, and we have a number of these. Garbage is another one.
Roads.
Uh, no, not roads. Roads we pay for. Anyway, there's just, there's several of these kinds of, we get, oh, animal shelter. Anyway, just, there's a number of things that we just get billed and we turn right around and bill other people. The people that are affected by it, so.
Any further discussion on that?
Mayor, can I interject just with something that I looked up? The word tenant currently appears in four different ordinances in the city.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Sherry.
I'll have to go look those up, see what, see what it says.
Yeah.
I read through them this summer.
Well, hopefully that will figure into the further discussion next meeting, too. All right. So it looks like number 11 is next on the agenda. So proposed ordinance of ending city code 615 snow removal streets. And that. I have Doral, but maybe these are swapped because.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I read it, but.
Wayne, please.
I can answer a couple of the questions that Sherry Berger brought up relative to the snow removal. Sidewalks are sidewalks, they're not trails or walking pa, uh, they maybe could be walking paths, but they're not trails. What some cities have done, we've looked, and there's quite a few of them, who have put the onus on the property owner to clear the sidewalks that's in front of their residents. And so this is the first time that we've done this. In fact, throughout the city, the only areas where we have sidewalks is in Four Seasons subdivision. So this does not pertain to Summit Creek. Their, their road configuration is different than Four Seasons is. And so, again, the only subdivision, and it's intended, when that area down below on the north side of the city gets developed, it's likely most of it would be developed with an R119 zone. And that zone then does allow for sidewalks. And we're like, we've changed that as well just recently. When the ordinance was first passed, there are only sidewalks on half the street. And we really didn't envision cul-de-sacs being in that configuration. So what's happened up to now is in a cul-de-sac, there's only sidewalks halfway through the cul-de-sac. And that's kind of not the right way to, to do it. So that's been changed. So there's cul-de-sacs now when a new developer will come in, there will be cul-de-sacs throughout the, excuse me, there'll be sidewalks throughout the cul-de-sac if that's a configuration that they want to have. So it was brought up that a number of cities have required the homeowner or leasing or rentor to clear the sidewalks in front of their place. And this is what that, that does, to alleviate the city having to send people around every time there's a snowstorm to clear the sidewalks. Because those sidewalks are on city property. They're in the city right of way. So that's the idea behind it. And other cities have done the same thing. We're, we're following suit. They have 24 hours after a, a snowfall or a snow accumulation to clear the sidewalks and ice that might be on the sidewalk.
That's how Santaquin City does it. That's where we lived before here. We were required to clear our own sidewalks.
Orem and a number of other cities do that as well. So that's the background on it.
I'm going to be forgiving when the snowplows push four feet of ice and snow over top of the sidewalk, like they did some of our fire hydrants, you know? It just happens, so realize enforcing this is, is a little bit of forgiving attitude, perhaps.
About being a good neighbor, I think.
True, yeah.
And clearing your sidewalk so the children can walk on it or neighbors. I think it's not so much about somebody coming and enforcing and giving a ticket as the homeowner being a good neighbor.
Yeah. And I.
In my mind, anyway.
I support this too, yeah. That's true.
Okay, item 12, an update on the Summit Creek development agreements.
So I will say it this way, it's in the hands of the lawyers. Anyway, we've had lots and lots of meetings, lots of emails back and forth, lots of good progress, too. Anyway, that's from my perspective. Ben, you have any? Good job, Dave.
Doral, did you have some?
No, no, thank you. I just really appreciate Paul and Dave for doing the best they could and get that done. So thanks to them.
Well, and, and Wayne has done a lot of work and.
Yeah.
And honestly, Summit Creek's done a lot of work. So it's definitely been a collaborative effort. Their desire was that we would have voted for it before the end of the year. There, there were other circumstances, primarily in getting the lawyers together, that made that not quite as possible. But I think we'll be close and hopefully we should have something shortly. One thing we do need to do, though, and I, I just am going to state this again, in all of my time on the planning commission and all of my time on the council, we've never done a development agreement. So this is new territory for all of us. So one thing we need to find out from Craig is how exactly do we go about passing this? We just need to find out what the laws are. So, anyway, if we could find out what we need to do, then that might help set, set us up so we can have a timetable in place.
There is a state statute that deals with development agreements. So there's a lot of information there to help guide across that. Also, Craig has written a handbook, so to speak, on zoning. And included in that, it's one that they used as they went around and gave presentations to land use authorities. And there is a section in there devoted to development agreements. That's also helpful to read. That's available, the city has, Jody has a copy of that. Ben, if you want to.
Do you have electronic copy that you could send to us? Okay, yeah, that would be nice if you could send us that. And, and Wayne, if you could send us a link to that state statute you referred to. That'd be helpful.
Handbook open to public or not?
Hold on, Craig. Craig, my state statute is open.
Yeah, I'm talking about Craig.
Okay. Thanks, Wayne. So item 13, rescheduling of the March 8, 2022 city council meeting due to caucus meetings. Carrie, you mentioned that to me, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, some of you have participated in the past. The statewide caucus meetings for all political parties are held on that Tuesday night, March 8, throughout the state. And so they have asked that all, well, that all other meetings be either postponed or canceled to accommodate letting residents attend, those who are wanting to attend. We have done that, at least for the last 20-some years, we have done that as a council on the night, if, if it happens to fall on the same night. It doesn't always, it's on a Tuesday every other year. But sometimes it has fallen on council night, sometimes it has not. But I am requesting that we either cancel or post or change the meeting night for March to allow our residents to participate in the caucus night, whichever party they belong to.
So would we cancel or would we just move it back? Do it a week earlier?
I think a lot of that depends on the agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, if we have, if we have things that we need to cover, then we move it. If we don't, then we cancel it.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, it, it sounds, maybe it's just the drink from the firehouse that I'm feeling right now. But it seems like there are a number of items. Carrie and I spoke today also about budgetary items, trying to get those early on, sort of in our crosshairs. And so if agreeable, I will just review some of the items that we have in the next council meeting. Okay. Next is the mayor and city council assignments. I've talked to a number of you offline regarding the status of assignments. I am a believer that if it's not broken, we don't need to tamper with it. So effectively, my proposal is to leave the assignments as they are with a few relatively minor modifications with Janet.
I had a really light load.
Yes, so Janet would be assuming Paul's load and then as well as that, she would be.
Roads.
Taking on.
Public works. It's not just roads.
Yeah, public works is public.
But I'm also.
That's not even on, that's, that's on the city council, city assignments. We're talking first that council assignments for the county. So we have SESD, which would be then you, Mayor. So we have SESD which would be then you, mayor.
Yeah, no, and I, I'll get to that, I, I just wanted to point out that, um, so with Janet, um, she will be largely filling in the role of the Paul played. Uh, with one exception.
But which one is that on the county, I can't remember right now off the top of my head.
Oh, okay, so if.
He had animal shelter.
Animal shelter.
And, and, so let's just go through these one at a time, so. SESD, I'm gonna hold on to that and mag and cog, I will continue to those. Nine-one-one, special service district that left law and then. Um, the South Valley, South Utah Valley Solid East District, um, also now then. The animal shelter, it was Paul and now Janet. And the municipal water district, uh, Dave. That uh, Eagle Water District and the Utah Lake Mission, Harry. Emergency management.
Carrie.
Carrie and citizen law and protection program.
Sounds good.
City council, maybe assign.
Yay.
Communication team, Carrie. Events and volunteers, it will be Janet, place of law. And then the public works committee, it was Dave and Paul. That Mark, the chair of the public works committee did request. Um, that the council consolidate that to a single member, so Janet, he would have been stepping in, but. They did request that it be just a single council member, so um, something that was considered.
You know what you're doing, but I can, I can help.
I can do public works.
Yeah.
Finance committee, Dave, public safety, Dora. Um, and citizen law and protection program.
Who's Dora? Like is, Doral, are you okay having three city assignments?
Yeah, the public safety and CWPP are kinda combined in my mind, but I, I'm okay with that.
Okay, making sure.
I could do better at my job, I'll admit, but uh, I like those assignments.
Okay, good, well, and, and again, if you need to take him off this.
Or you could take him off PTR and I could do PTR with Ben.
That would be helpful. Thank you Janet, if you could do that.
Just because the events and volunteers isn't, it only comes around a few times.
They meet first Wednesday of, of most months. So that might, if that works for you Janet.
Third Tuesday.
Which, one thing on all of these committees that we need to do a better job of. Is making sure that we don't schedule over the top of each other because they are public meetings. So they have to be noticed, they have to be recorded and minutes have to be produced.
Jody's pretty good at keeping everybody on the schedule to make sure that it's, nobody's overlapping. Are you laughing at me volunteering for things back there?
You are the best, I'll think of some more things.
Uh-uh, I'm done.
All right, um, and if there's no further discussion on that, we'll move on to some possible items for upcoming city council meetings. So we already talked about the caucus meeting, the Utah legislature reps discussing impactful legislation. Um, and then Carrie, you mentioned um, the uh, a meeting with the county sheriff.
Yeah, the sheriff's deputy, oh, I wanted to give you an update, a couple of weeks ago or the last meeting. Um, a citizen had posted that it took an hour and a half to get up here. So I had the sheriff go back and look at the records of um, of what really occurred that night. And actually the sheriff's deputy was on site in our city within ten minutes. And so we did, they did not go to that citizen's home that called it because it was called in as a, a car just left and this is what it looks like. But they were here within ten minutes and going all around our city looking for that vehicle or the, that person that was um, described to them. After an hour and a half, they went to the citizen and said we were here, so it was a miscommunication. The deputies did show up within ten minutes of getting the call, dispatch calling them. And they were here, but they did not check in with the resident, so that was where the miscommunication happened. And so um, the sheriff's deputy comes on this second meeting of our, our month to give an update if we want one, if we. So not this time, but next time. Um, and he will give us another update and maybe further talk about that issue. Um, but the um, sheriff's office as a whole would like to meet with us as a council. Uh, with the mayor and just kinda discuss what they do provide and how they function and everything else on a non-council night. So I am wondering, just so that can be dedicated just to having that discussion and more questions answered, et cetera. So we would like to maybe see what day or night works best for the council to be able to come and have that presentation. From them, they have several people who want to talk with us. Um, so do you have a preference of, of night, they would like to do it before the twenty-fifth if possible, before they actually?
I really would like this and I'd like Craig invited.
Well, yeah, of course, it's, it's a public meeting.
This sounds like a good idea, yes.
The, the deputy had asked me if, if at all possible, if we could meet before the twenty-fifth and I said I would put it out there. And, and see if we are available, which would mean sometime next week. Who's in training? Detson, yeah.
We're in training next week too.
Okay, so, well, that's what he said to me on the phone, I'd like this meeting before the twenty-fifth.
I, I.
But I can, I can, why don't I check back with him and make sure? Yeah, yeah, he called, well, he, he talked to me and I suggested that and then he said, hey. I would really like to do this before the twenty-fifth, Mayor Winder, and I talked about the things that he had discussed his concerns with me. And we've decided that we want it to be a, a regular, not a regular council meeting, but a regular meeting where it's noticed that we all come together. So let me, I'll follow up with him then and find out um, exactly when he wants and then I could send an email out and see.
Okay.
Gotta write that down.
Thanks Carrie, and then Carrie also, uh, discussing today, she requested. Uh, further to the point that I made earlier, a budget retreat early in March, allowing. Some more in-depth consideration of budgetary issues. So the proposed date was March first. So it would be the week before the, what would be the caucus meeting, so if we do reschedule that meeting. Um, you know, the first would be ruled out, I suppose, if we're gonna propose that for budget.
My, my reason.
So I very much agree with that. What I would like to request of all of the new folks. Is that you become intimately familiar with the budget before the budget retreat. Now, what do I mean by intimately familiar? City budgets are different than your household budgets, they're different than a business budget. And honestly, a lot of the, in the past, when we've had long, long discussions over budget. It's mostly because of that difference. People think of a city budget as a household or a business budget and it's just a totally different animal. So I will make myself available to anyone who wants to go through the budget very specifically. And I will explain it line by line so that when we do get to the retreat, it's less about line by line. Cause that will kill all of us if we go line by line. And more about, well, what's our vision, what's, what's the priority? Do we wanna favor this as opposed to this? Or, you know, I mean, that's what that budget retreat should be about and less about line by line, cause line by line is.
I mean, we do take a considerable amount of time, we want our residents to know that we're not flippant in this and that we do spend quite a bit of time going over that. And that was one of the reasons for my request is that the new mayor will be talking with the directors of each, of each area to see what their budgets are. But then it allows us time to go through it, it also allows for adequate time for input from residents after it's proposed. Because it is just a proposed budget and then as a council, then we can go through it and say, this is what I like, I don't like what, this is the changes that we could make, et cetera. So that by the time April comes, um, if we, we hopefully have had some time to hash out some of those things. Make some good recommendations because the first meeting in June, although it's not really required that we have it until more the end of the June, we have to have. Whether it's our final budget or our proposed budget voted on by, because of state statute, it has to be there. So that we know if we're going to have to have a truth in taxation or if we're going just forward with whatever we've set in mind. So there is some specific time deadlines involved. And I wanna give us, especially because we have three new people on board, adequate time to really have in-depth discussions so that our residents know that we're not just doing something. Because we've run out of time and we don't know what else to do.
And, and do not underestimate the budget.
Yes.
It's, out of all the things that we do over the course of a year, it consumes almost four months of our time. And so you think about it, that's a third of our council time is budget, which is, I mean, it's good because it's the most. One of the, probably the most important thing we do is budget, but, you know, and so anyway, I'm just saying.
In addition to that, there's probably going to be, as we come to the end of the year. Where we recognize where we might need to reallocate funds that were, were put in one budget that now need to be moved to a different category. Because we've had increase in costs, which, you know, there are some things that have cost more this year. That we may need to, then what we call open the budget, which means all of us vote to go in and reallocate funds to another area. And that may be simultaneously why we're looking at next year's budget that we have to readjust this year's budget. So just, just a thought.
Okay, Jody.
Um, I know he's unmuted, but Chris Owey, who's our financial director, is on this call. And he commented that he would be happy to sit down with the, with the, with the whole world.
That'd be great.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah.
Not repeated at work, but back to Carrie's comment, Debbie, does all of the sheriffs have GPS on their, on their vehicle? They have GPS tracking, they would probably give that information to you, but not to any of the residents. So it's.
That would help me a lot.
Yeah.
That would be incredibly helpful when citizens call me and, and kinda complain sometimes.
Yeah, we, we, that they are here.
I'd like to know.
Within a certain time period, but, but one of the things they don't wanna do is coming back is. I wouldn't say wasting time, but if they're looking for someone who is a, who is committing a crime in our community. They're not gonna come to you first and say, by the way, tell me everything you just said on the phone again. We want them out looking for that person, they may never even get back to the person who called. And that might be a communication issue that we might need to um, look so that we have some follow-up from our end that they were here, this is what happened, et cetera. We used to do kind of, I don't know what they call police blotter, where we would say. The, the sheriff's deputy would give us a little account that said we were here for fifteen dog complaints, we were here for this many domestic disturbances. We were here for um, uh, vehicle theft, we were here for whatever, right? They used to give us kind of that number down uh, thing, but they haven't been doing that for a while. Um, but at least it shows that they're in town.
Well, and I think if they were willing to share that with some of us, we should also respect and not give that information out either. If they're busy, they, they need to be doing that job and. Okay, oh, good. Okay, but just don't share it with, with any citizen that asks you.
The, the statistics should be shared, should be shared with us.
I was talking to GPS information. Right, right.
Right. Right, I'll ask.
Okay.
Well, and I'll make sure that.
If it's okay with them and, and I respect them needing to not advertise where they are to everyone, you know?
Right.
For obvious reasons.
And we wanna make sure our citizens and that's why I wanted to give that update because when I called him when that first happened, he was really concerned about it. So he got back with me and said, I looked into that GPS tracking and I, and I documented the time that they got the call to the time they got there. Was just under ten minutes, which was pretty good. They just didn't contact the resident in that time period, which I agree.
That's good to know, thank you for doing that. Yes, right, right.
Okay.
So, so back to that other issue, the budget retreat, are we okay?
March first, I'm good.
Where do you want it first?
Where would you, where do you retreat?
In the past, we've already, always done it at Wendy's house.
We're going to her house.
So Wendy's, is she there or is your house available?
I have a cabin, but it's five hours.
She built that nice new addition for us.
Last time we did it via Zoom because of COVID things, so, I mean.
I like it in person.
It doesn't really matter per se, but.
Here's okay with me too.
Just somewhere, it's gonna be like all day, somewhere comfortable.
Well, it's not, it's, it's not all night, yes.
So I'm good.
So, yeah, I think we should do it here. Typically, we've started like at five or six and just.
I think we should.
Five or six in the morning.
Go to Dave's house or something.
But you know, I think it is important that we, we not um, just say we're meeting for two hours, right? I think we, we start and we, and we go and sometimes it does take a while, but I think that's what's important for us to be able to explain to our residents. Especially if our budget um, doesn't always align um, right at the beginning so that we can. If we have to have a truth in taxation, at least we've done our due diligence and we've cut where we can and we've. We've really looked at what we need to spend because there are some increases. Um, both with things that we're, we're required to do and with the cost of materials. I mean, our roads especially.
And, and Dave, you're fun, I think that it's, that's a very valuable suggestion that we try to prep for it. So the first is the candidate Dave then, they're willing for. Further as needed, um, okay, so. I'm told that now we could take a break if uh, there are those that would like a break, so why don't we do.
Yeah.
Be ten minutes and then reconvene at uh, eight oh five.
Or even five, whatever, whatever.
I need everyone to turn on their mics, at least I need to turn mine on because mine was not on. Okay, uh, we will now move to the city council meeting. Um, and council member Hilliard has agreed to offer our pledge and then.
A sign.
Uh, council member Pratt offering the invocation, sound right for everybody?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Him and we are very grateful to be meeting this night. We are mindful and grateful for um, those who have served our city so well. We're grateful for their efforts and grateful for their sacrifice on our behalf. We are also very grateful for those who, those citizens who have um. Put themselves in a place where they are also willing to serve our city and we pray that that will bless them, guide them and help them as they. Come up to speed and also make very important decisions on behalf of all of our residents. We pray that that would bless our residents, that they might engage with us. And be willing to. Work towards the true word of community and that we might come together to solve problems and. Come up with creative and. Solutions that are truly in the spirit of Woodland Hills. We are grateful for all that we have and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, Dave. Okay, so now we have the public comment. Segment and. In the room, do we have any comment from you, Miley? Ben, do you have something? Yeah, please.
Um, so I'm Ben Brinley with with Summit Creek. During the last break, Dave and I spoke for just a second and I just have Dave a little bit more of information since we spoke. So the attorneys did meet today at two thirty. It was apparently a very productive, really good meeting. The agreement is back with Craig and according to our attorney, there's a few items that he's going to get in touch with you, Dave and. And Wayne and I'm not sure if Paul is still involved. I guess he wouldn't be. But anyway, he's going to get back with the city. And so just so you're aware, if you guys. Maybe tomorrow, if you don't hear from Craig, maybe reach out to him and just say, hey, we understand it's in your court, you know, what are the additional items to work through? Um, and then we spoke about this for a little bit, Dave. I know you don't know the answer yet as far as what the process is to get this approved and you mentioned that earlier. If we could figure out what that is, so we kind of know how to prepare as well. And how to proceed so we can kind of get this to the finish line. We're super close. And so as soon as you're able to kind of let us know what that is, if it's planning commission and city council or just city council or whatever that process is, just so we can know. So appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Okay, um, just on the screen here, it looks like there's a few comments. Sherry, uh, go ahead. And just a reminder. Two minutes or less. I don't expect that'll be an issue, but I'll keep time and so go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, my comment is around, I. I don't remember hearing anything in the work session about the the city fee to increase the sewer. I did walk away a little bit during the meeting, but. My comment kind of centers around the sewer. When I read that on the agenda. My mind went back to when Jeff and I were building. And the development agreement that the city had with Thousand Oaks at the time about connecting up the dry sewer. And Mayor Lorentzen was very helpful and that did happen and. The residents were at that time given the opportunity up here in Thousand Oaks. To connect to the sewer if they wanted to, to get off a septic. And I do remember in part of those city council discussions that one of the things that came up was that perhaps when. Residents sold their property. And it was easily accessible for them to hook up to the sewer. That that be something that they be asked to do if they couldn't afford hooking up to the sewer, you know, themselves, but when their house was sold. They had to hook up to the sewer. It had something to do, I think, with the agreement with Payson. That we have so many people accessing the sewer and that wasn't happening. So. My comment is just to kind of refresh the city council's mind on this in terms of sewer in general. And septic tanks. I know in reading the history of Woodland Hills. It was difficult for the homeowners association. To convince the county, if you will, about a septic tank usage. So anything we can do to perhaps get away from septic tanks, maybe. Anyway, that's just.
Two minutes. I don't want to cut you off, but if you could.
No, that's all. That's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, and then Mark, uh, looks like you've got a comment as well.
I I do. Uh, Mayor, uh, you guys were discussing committee assignments a few minutes ago during the work session. I was trying to look up the ordinance. But you had mentioned that our conversation, email conversation a couple of months back that during our November conversation with the committee, there was discussion of maybe cutting back to one. Uh, liaison for for public works. Uh, I relayed that to you thinking it was a good idea. However, I'm reading the ordinance creating the public works committee. It does state that there will be two liaisons from the. Council. I can try and share that with you. I was trying to find it. By the time I found it, you had moved on to other things, so I wasn't able to get to you on that. I can try and share that ordinance on the screen if I can figure out how to do it, or I can just tell you where it's located, wherever you prefer. But the the ordinance does re does require two council liaisons on the committees and that wasn't, I didn't not realize that until after I had talked to you back in December.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And yeah, if you would just, in the interest of time, if you would just refer to the the ordinance, uh, that you're.
Oh, sure. Let me see if I can find it real quick again. It's going to be. It's ordinance twenty twenty zero zero two. It's going to be procedure. It's going to be procedure capital A sub. Subsection or subparagraph C is what that would what refers to that. In addition, I can read it real quick. In addition. The city public works director, planning commission chairman, snowplow supervisor and two city council members appointed by the mayor shall be standing members of the committee.
Okay.
As I recall, that was.
Thank you for keeping us honest.
That was done as a resolution, not an ordinance.
Uh. Subject, purpose committee. Uh, it says, this is city operations and policy procedure. Uh, it could be an ordinance or a or a resolution. I'm not sure, but either way, that's what it states.
Would we treat it differently either way?
Well, so resolutions are, don't have the same. Power. I don't know the right word as an ordinance. Ordinances are more set in stone and I think we did all of the committees as resolutions. And it was specifically because at the time we didn't really know, like one of the reasons the public works committee. Had two council members is because one council member was over water, one was over roads. And so you needed both there because that really was what comprised public work. And since then, we've kind of combined the two so that it's, anyway, it's kind of the same thing. And because so much of our water work encompasses road work and road work requires water work. So anyway.
And once again, I'm sorry, councilman, I I'm comfortable with one liaison. I just wanted to make sure that we had it clear what what the policy or resolution was saying before we change that.
If, I mean, since it is a pass, we would need to just modify the resolution.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if if it's a resolution, then we could just make a new one tonight. Okay.
Well, I don't think we could do it tonight.
Oh, yeah, not tonight. Okay, we can make a new one.
We don't make law in this meeting.
Well, I was thinking if it was less formal, then it would be something that we could simply pass. I was considering it akin to like an executive order that.
I would say to put one or two, just because I do think that there are times when water and road go together, but other times where they are separate and. So I think that we shouldn't li limit ourselves to just one.
Well.
Better say one or two.
I hear what you're saying, but let me just disagree with you. Since it's only one committee, they're they're always discussed together. Meaning it's not like we have two different committees.
Right.
And so it doesn't really matter if there's one or two. I mean, if you want to counsel people, that's fine. But it's not from a functional standpoint. It's not like roads and water are discussed separately in the committee.
Right. I think just for the perspective, because it's such a major part of of our community, roads and water.
No question about that.
Are a big entity and and I just think that having a perspective on both might be.
I think it, I think it should be two personally, just because then you have two opposing. Opinions possibly where it's not just all one person that's got the burden of it and is making all the decisions. I feel like it should be two. I'm not saying me, I'm just saying two. I think it should be. That's just my opinion.
Well, it would naturally fall to you. I mean, because if you're going to be building in for.
Or go to Ben.
I'd love to take on that side with Dave.
It's our biggest expense, those two, so we ought to.
It's just. I just think it's it's important enough that it would be good to have backup and have more than one person. And then not all the decisions or all of the burden is falling on one.
Yeah, I I agree. I don't know. We wouldn't have to wait till next meeting because that was already on our work session, so. Then could be added in easily with Dave on public works.
If you're okay with me working with you and if it's okay with the mayor.
Yeah, no, I was going to defer to Dave and and Mark, because that's this issue came up because there was some expression of perhaps some inefficiencies, but if that's.
Well, what it ended, and again, just how it ended up functioning, you know, from a practical standpoint is. Usually Paul and I were both there. Um, sometimes we weren't. Sometimes I'd miss or he'd miss or whatever. And so. Anyway, just like any other committee, you ended up sometimes having ideas and other times not really, and we ended up discussing everything. Like I said, together.
Right.
It wasn't like you you separate. Okay, now we're going to talk about water. Let's only talk about water. Oh, now we're going to talk about roads. Let's only talk about roads. It was really, it was a combined discussion all the time.
It's just, and everything's pretty good right now, but it's such a big response.
And and remember, this is a non-binding committee. They're just making recommendations. They have no authority really to do anything without the council as a whole.
I I kind of like the idea what what Dave just said. Sometimes they make it, sometimes they can't, but I think it's important that the council person be at such a big decision. So. I then revert back to what Jenna just said, having two people, if one can't make it, at least the other one's there.
Yeah, no, I that's fair. And Ben, if you're good with that, I would recommend you and Dave then in that capacity. Okay, thank you, Mark.
Excuse me, I I'm sorry. I know I don't know how much of my two minutes was taken up in that discussion and how much wasn't, but there is one more item I I think is. That I would like to address and that's on your, the resolution on the impact fee schedule. Uh, city fees and impact fees are a little bit different. I mean, for the city council to say, let's raise a park fee or let's change the water fee is one thing. But when you look at impact fees, again, that's a different animal. There are, there are a lot of nuances involved with that. And under Utah State State Impact Law, there are, there is a requirement of an impact fee study and a capital facilities. Facilities impact be studied for larger communities that is required to be reviewed and signed and approved by a certified license or professional engineer, excuse, professional licensed engineer. Now, it may be that the city of Payson has incorporated us in their impact fee and it may have not. So I'm not sure. So I would just. Caution that you guys are sure that you're covering all the legal ramifications of changing an impact fee prior to doing so.
Mark, we we and council, we have a copy of the impact fee study that Payson did to justify that fee. So we have a copy of it here in the office.
And we are included as a city. We are included in that impact fee area.
Yeah.
I haven't seen it, but I'm, we have a contract with Payson, but I haven't seen the study, but I can't imagine they didn't include us.
I just, okay, and that's fine. I was just going to caution that, you know, that that is, there are some state laws required with that that you'd need to be, that I would recommend or at least caution that you that you understand completely before raising an impact fee.
Thank you, Mark. Great points.
And that that's all I got on that. Thank you.
Contract. So if we don't increase the fee, then we have to pay whatever the difference is on that contract. So. If they're saying this is the increase that we're putting into place. And the residents aren't going to pay that until we say that's the new fee schedule, then we're on the hook ourselves as a city to pay the difference with every hookup. So I I feel that it would be better for us to pass that increase when they have given us the contract and they have done the study. Um, we're the pass-through, but we are the entity that signed the contract and we are the one that pays the bill.
Corbin.
Re but remember, these these fees are only paid when a billing permit is issued.
Yes.
That's that's when the impact fee is collected. When we notify Payson that we've issued ten permits, Payson sends us a bill for ten impact fees. It it's done at billing permit. This isn't an ongoing thing.
But in your opinion, it's justified.
I'll double check it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, as a follow-up to Sherry Burger's comment, I remember earlier councils. Did want homes when they changed hands to connect to sewer. In the areas that's available and that was just like a firm rule. I don't know how we enforce that.
Talked to that because we did talk about that we needed a certain percentage.
We looked into it pretty heavily, or at least I did when we first, before we ever started that sewer to tie in Thousand Oaks. And at the time, the council didn't want to pass an ordinance to require people to hook up. So that has to be done by ordinance. Every other city that we checked with has an ordinance that requires people to hook up within a certain time. Or within a certain distance or both, but until you pass it by ordinance, you can't.
Probably the way to do it then.
Until you pass it by ordinance, you can't require it.
Okay.
Well, people pick and choose and at the time you're going to get towards the end, it's cheaper to do.
No, it's just an answer to comments.
Okay, Jody, are there any other hands raised that you can see? Okay, all right. Uh, unless there's further comment in this room, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, item twenty, November nine, twenty twenty-one, city council meeting minutes.
So I'll make a motion to approve both of those, the consent agendas.
Second.
Okay, and now we take a vote, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you you, okay, so the way the Robert's rules work is somebody makes a motion, somebody seconds it, then you say, is there any more comment? So that's when we can discuss or have comment and then we take a vote on the motion.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I'm.
So now you did say, is there any discussion?
Okay, yeah, any any further discussion on this? Okay, let's vote. Uh, we don't do roll call. We just all in favor say aye or.
With this one, yeah.
We have to do roll call on the resolutions. We have to do roll call.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Okay.
I'm I'm sorry, say that again, Jody. Okay.
I'm, yeah.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Item twenty-one, December fourteen, twenty twenty-one, city council meeting minutes.
Well, then we didn't.
We did that.
We didn't.
Oh, you done both, okay.
Consent agenda is together.
Okay, perfect. All right, item twenty-two, resolution twenty twenty-two oh one, appointing a city recorder.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Third, fourth, fifth.
And.
Carrie and David.
Well, we'll let Doral.
And we have to do these individually?
Okay.
Okay. We'll we'll start with.
And vote?
With Carrie. So we do a roll call vote, right?
It's not an ordinance, so we're okay.
Oh, so resolutions, okay, I'm sorry.
As long as she knows who did the first and second.
Okay, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item twenty-three, resolution twenty twenty-two oh two, appointing a deputy city recorder. And that would be Marcy.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item twenty-four, resolution twenty twenty-two, appointing, or twenty twenty-two dash oh three, appointing a city treasurer. And that's Lori Thomas.
I move we pass that.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Doral. David seconded.
She's very qualified.
Okay, item twenty-five, resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh four, appointing a mayor pro tem. I've suggested Ben.
I'll make the motion to approve Ben as the mayor pro tem.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item twenty-six, resolution.
Twenty-seven.
And twenty-seven. Okay, so we. Opted to table these for the moment, so. Do we need to get a motion on that or we just table it?
As the mayor, you just table it.
Okay.
You you own the agenda.
Okay.
So you can table. So you can table or bring anything on the agenda that you want.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item 28, resolution 2022-7, amending city fee schedule for increase in sewer impact fee.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 29.
We also agreed to table.
Oh, yeah, okay, item 29 is tabled, thank you. And item 30, ordinance 2022-2, ordinance amending city code 6-1-5, snow removal from streets.
So moved.
I'll second that.
It's from, and it's not from streets, it's from sidewalk.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It says streets, but yeah, sidewalk.
Not below, it says, when it says the ordinance on there, it says include snow removal from sidewalks. So we do have to do the roll call on this.
Okay, very good.
But I made the motion. Who seconded?
I seconded.
Okay, so roll call vote, council member Malkovich?
Yes.
Council member Hilliard?
Yes.
Council member Pratt?
Yes.
Council member Kinniston?
Yes.
And council member Lund?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any miscellaneous?
Yeah, any other items that?
I have a real quick one. I want to thank publicly the sheriff's department for, Deputy Dudson helped immensely the day we did the Santa. It was really cool that he spent time with us going around the city and it's our, we've never had participation like that before and it was much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, Doral, that.
It was really, it was really great.
It was.
Okay, well.
And I was happy to be, that he was the first one so that there was a couple incidents. It was nice to have the sheriff.
He was very helpful.
His nature, his nature is perfect for helping our citizens. I, I like him.
Yeah.
Hope he stays forever.
Yeah, amen. Okay, well, can I get a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Hey.
Second.
All right, meeting adjourned.
So I will find out on the date that the deputy.